Okay. We're gonna open the Calhoun County Council with two public hearings. Begin with, on this twenty twenty dash one, an ordinance providing for the interest and sale of water work system revenue bonds of Calhoun County South Carolina, all matters relating to that. Anybody have any questions?
Mr. Legend, we have an attorney that's on the way, he's not here yet. Let me give a full detailed explanation of these, he's just not here yet. So I'm asking this Christmas if should we do a basic explanation in lieu of that, and then when the ordinance has actually come up later on the agenda, they should be here, if you don't mind, I would like for them to be able to give a more detailed explanation than if that's all right with council.
Okay, well, cut the page, you know. Okay. You already had five minutes cut from your page.
You can dish it off at the time.
Yeah, we have, we just opened the first public hearing.
We're the first public hearing on this twenty twenty dash one, providing for interest of water work system revenue bonds.
Thank you.
Calhoun County South Carolina.
Alright, so guys, we have two public hearings in front of us tonight. First is for a master bond ordinance. This is a document that we've created. Right now, the county has three outstanding series of water system revenue bonds, each of which is owned by USDA or government. You have a ninety-nine line you've acquired when you purchased the nonprofit cooperative lottery. You have a student out from back nineteen ninety-nine, then a two thousand eight outstanding obligation, and a two thousand thirteen obligation. So obviously, revenue bonds, unlike your geo-bonds and secure side revenues in the water system exclusively, you can exclusively borrow through USDA rule development as a sole borrower to this point since the operation of the system, which you created by referendum back in the early days. The financial object for the county has identified a potential funding for savings, taking the longer term of two thousand eight revenue bond borrowing and collapsing into a shorter term, basically today's interest rates. So interest rates are at historic lows still, kind of kept thinking they were going to spike back up, but it really did not do. And as a result of that reduction in term and taking advantage of the lower interest rate, there is significant savings that have been proposed, and I will certainly defer to you for the financial background actual numbers. So in talking through the possibility and potential for funding that debt, we also identified that the nineteen ninety-nine FHA loan, which you've already acquired, also could be paid off. You don't owe a whole lot to the government, so, and that's going to be a budget decision to the council. But as a result of that, all of those loans are issued on what's called parity basis, meaning that if they were to be in the fall, the, you know, all of them are owned by USDA, you didn't have a parity requirement. The main priority would be everyone would stand shoulder to shoulder from the company. And so in potentially repaying the two thousand eight bonds, the banking ones, it would make sense to step down the priority, so put them as a junior lien priority and leave the outstanding thirteen bonds in place. And that accomplishes two perspectives. The first one is, is that the way that those original documents were done, the parity provisions are not different. And so what this is going to do in ordinance that we're proposing today is the master bond ordinance, we basically create the junior lien set, so the whatever bond stay outstanding in the two thousand thirteen USDA loan, and maybe the FHA loan, depending on what the site is paid off. But anything below that would be called a junior lien bond, issue under a dismanaging bond, essentially, effectively have a junior lien on the residual revenue to have you pay debt service on the nineteen ninety-nine bond and the two thousand thirteen bond. So that makes for a cleaner issuance, or a cleaner set of documents for future law enforcement. The other thing it also does is it permits you to issue future series of bonds without receiving the consent of USDA. But right now, when you issue debt, anytime you're issuing a bond parity with USDA, because you're effectively diluting their security interest, they have requested that you consent, their explicit consent for any authorization improvement. They're not going to actually require exclusive consent for any junior lien as well, if we 've wrapped it up a consent deal for them to agree to it, and to allow for this new ordinance to take that without any authorization. So basically, we give council a carte blanche discretion for future refunding purposes or for future new money improvement purposes on your water system. It goes through that process. You can go back to USDA, USDA doesn't pay for doing that. It's just that if you're looking and you see that there are potential local banking options, you can go to them without having to go back to USDA and check all the boxes that you have to go through if you go through a federal one. And so, long story short, what this ordinance does is it takes all the revenues of the water system that remain after you've paid the debt service on your outstanding USDA loans, and then centralizes, kind of lock boxes them from a credit standpoint. So we've created a master loan that takes eighty pages of one document to be able to get to have. And so what this document does is it consolidates all of those security interests and allows you to issue them through this single law. The follow-on authorization is the series ordinance that is the authorization for a single series bond, that actually is the authorization for the bonds that are being funded. So the ordinance number two is an amount not exceeding one point seven five million dollars, and that is taking, that is the authorization to refund the two thousand eight USDA loan and issue it under the terms of ordinance number one we're talking about. And so it's the very first supplemental series ordinance issued under the new master bond ordinance that you've approved, you know. I know that's a lot of information, I'm trying to throw at you at one time. Craig, I did it all out on the wall when we did the presentation.
Could I ask a question?
Yes, sir.
Those, the fact that we're making some of those, and maybe I'm, clear me up if I'm not clear, making some of those junior to the others of what it sounds like we're doing, right?
That's correct.
Does that affect the interest rate on those bonds because they are junior, or, I mean, certainly that sounds like it would step up the interest rate.
So, the interest rate, but given the underlying credit quality of your system, and what we look to for purposes of issuing revenue bonds is, is we look to see what the coverage ratio is for your system. And the way you determine that is you take all the revenues of the system, you back out all the expenses of the system. So it's the cost of chemicals, it's the cost of first water, it's the cost of your employees, and so, just roughly speaking, I use some really rough numbers here. If you had a million dollars that you were generating on the water system, and you had five hundred thousand dollar bill expenses, your net revenues for the system are five hundred thousand dollars. Under your bond covenants, required to maintain a mandatory minimum bond covered ratio of one point two times, which means that if you have debt service on your bonds of four hundred thousand dollars, and you have net revenues of five hundred thousand dollars, five hundred divided by four hundred is one point two, so you meet that threshold. The way that your revenues work right now is that you are at like three and a half times coverage, so you've got five hundred thousand dollars revenues, but only a hundred and twenty thousand dollars in debt service obligations under outstanding debt. So you've got more than sufficient coverage. And so the idea of peeling off a senior lien obligation who is going to get paid in front of the new junior lien obligation, while they are receiving a lower tiered priority from the coverage from a, from a security standpoint, the fact that you have so much excess revenue, it literally is, is being done for more legal reorganization and reconstruction than it is for anything to do with revenue.
Okay.
Is anybody having questions in the audience?
Could you cut that mic? Could you make sure that mic?
Joel, I'll check your mic.
Yeah, check your mic.
The sound's not going through.
No, I can restart that. I think we heard.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
The ordinance, the hearing on ordinance twenty twenty dash one is over. Ordinance twenty twenty dash two, an ordinance providing for the interest sale of a water work system refunding revenue bond to, to be designated series twenty twenty in a special in the testable amount of not to, not exceeding one million seven hundred fifty thousand dollars of Calhoun County, South Carolina, and all matters related to that. Does anybody have any questions about that, council? Let me answer that question, though. Anybody have any questions?
Just to let y'all know, it's about seven hundred and forty-eight thousand dollar savings over a fifteen year period.
Okay, alright, the public hearing on ordinance twenty twenty dash two is now over. Okay, we're going to the Calhoun County Council meeting on February twenty-fourth. I recall the meeting, all of the gentlemen, if you had any questions, pause there.
Yes, sir. More for your presence with us, we again give you thanks. We just ask that if you vote and conduct people's business, Calhoun County should give us wisdom, guidance, and do those things that are best for their interest, and we thank you for your blessings to us. This county will bring you Christ name. Amen.
Have a motion to approve the February tenth meeting. Second?
Second.
Any more discussion? All pay the motion aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. James, you got the committee reports?
No.
Uh, C, Nelson. Yeah, Ken. And, uh, anybody, James, you got that form?
I don't.
Okay. Okay, I got the resolution proclamation, proclamation honoring Milton Douglas for services of Calhoun County and the regional medical center. Milton, if you'd come up.
Thank you.
Appreciate what you did for us and, uh, going through with it. You know, that work from the Dunn fight guys over there. Alright. Calhoun County proclamation, we ask Milton Douglas to appoint him in February two thousand four to run for Calhoun County on board of trustees for regional medical center. And we ask Mr. Douglas, sir, on numerous votes, committed in his capacity as a trustee until his resignation in December twenty nineteen, having been voted RNC trustee of the year twenty nineteen, and serve as chair of the initial regional health service board in twenty nineteen. Thank you very much, Bill. So, Milton.
Want me to say a bit, Paul?
Do.
So, Milton.
When you say a bit, Paul?
Do.
I thought she said.
Counselor, I appreciate the trust that you've placed in me and the confidence that you put in me. You put me on the board fifteen years ago, and fifteen years was a long time. When I went on the board, Dennis Rickbeck was a little boy, and he was sitting in the chair, he couldn't sit on the table, so that's how long I've been on the board. Long enough. Indeed, I thank you for your trust in me, and I look forward to Boyd, and to Kenneth, and Cynthia, who represent this county well on that board. I know they'll do a great job. Thank you, Milton, appreciate you so much.
Thank you, appreciate your service.
Right. You know, but I bet Ms. Carrie Kellner would have been proud of me to read that without stuttering.
Indeed, you would.
Alright, thank you, Milton. Alright, appearances, Jared Brute?
Yes, sir. I talked to Mr. Felder, and it seemed appropriate about once a quarter for me to just come to council and just give you a quick two-minute update on what's going on in the magistrate court systems, so I'll fund it, and we're accountable to the county. So let me just tell you a few changes we've made in the last month. First, I've asked the other two magistrates to undertake a review of all their pending cases over the next ninety days, so by May, I'll be able to come back to you and report on that. There's a lot of old pending cases out there, you know, cases that Capitol's on, you know, citizens and litigants lose their, their day in court. There's one particular court that has cases that some are five, ten years old, and maybe it's just a matter of closing them on the computer, maybe it's a matter of doing something. But I can tell you, I've gotten a administrative order from the Supreme Court of Columbia, they've already transferred over forty cases from one magistrate court to my court, because they're cases that are two years old, and the lawyers were calling my office just trying to get it scheduled. So I've transferred over forty cases from, from the same court to my court to get disposed. The other thing we've done is, it used to be if a citizen came to the St. Matthews magistrate court, because we're the Monday through Friday court, we're the full-time court, and wanted to pay a traffic ticket, they couldn't do it, we were blocked out of the other two courts. So I've made that change in court administration and Columbia, and now citizens can come to St. Matthews court and pay their traffic tickets, particularly when the other two courts are closed. And of course, we'll transfer those funds to the court that they belong to. to the citizens in our county. The forty cases I mentioned that were over two years old, and some of those cases were represented by lawyers in our community, ones involved in business in our community, and so I saw the need to get those closed and done. The next thing I've done, I've been in contact with Denise Christmas, Judge Lake's accounts, and of course, he was there for thirty years, his accounts are still open and pending, they're not being used, but they have been closed out. That is no fault of Denise's, that was tasked to former chief magistrate, and they're still pending, and I've been here for two years, I don't know why they're still open. So I've gotten an order from court of instructions, those accounts will be closed and reconciled by June thirtieth, the end of this fiscal year. And now, there's not much in them, there's probably a couple hundred dollars that needs to be returned to the county, but they need to be reconciled and closed. Lastly, I've instructed the other two magistrates to submit our budget requests through finance separately, so those will be coming in. And the last thing I want to tell you is Judge Thomas Randolph, who has been our Cameron magistrate for many fine years, will be retiring June thirtieth. Magistrates face mandatory retirement when we hit seventy-two, and his birthday is this spring, and we have to retire for the end of this fiscal year. So we wish him well, I'm sure we plan to congratulate him and send him off, and if you ever see him, he looks like about thirty-nine, he's in spring. Judge, and I really like working with him, we are in the process, Senator Matthews, in the slated delegation, and the process of receiving requests and applications from folks who want to step into that part-time magistrate role. So that's it, just a quick two-minute update, I'll try to do that once a quarter, and if you have any questions, I'm glad to respond to them.
Any questions?
Oh, one last thing too, we are with, with the new establishment environmental control officer who's in charge of litter and other things, I'm sentencing people to community service to pick up trash.
Good.
And those that do litter, you know, I get sometimes high school students or people who can't pay a fine, and, and I'll be darned if I'm going to tell a senior in high school to pay a fine on a student ticket, mom and daddy pay it, that doesn't teach them anything. So those, those folks are getting community service out.
Good, they have it good.
So much.
I do have, you said that people can now come to St. Matthews to pay a ticket for St. John's, is it vice versa? Like can, does it do it other way?
They can, but that's not usually how the request works, because we're open Monday through Friday, but, but yes, they could, they could pay, if they wouldn't see any young one to pay it up there, they could pay a St. Matthews ticket up there.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am? Alright, thank you so much.
Appreciate.
Yes, sir.
Human retard, correct, Brandon Ross.
Good evening. Some of you may be aware that Administrator Felder gave me the task of re-banking our risk management program back in December, and I'm just here to give a little brief update on that. Today, I've attended several meetings and trainings to include the risk manager conference in Birla Beach. Recently, about a week and a half ago, I met with Van Henderson, the risk manager for the Association of Counties, and he's given me great guidance in what we need to do going forward, which I've included for you guys tonight, so just take a moment, look that over when you have a moment. I'm also currently working on developing a training program for department heads in accident investigation, that was an area that we were lacking. I'll also record at our bi-monthly department head meetings relevant information associated with the risk management program. I've visited several departments, which I'll continue to do, so that I can address individual needs of those different departments. The Association of Counties has multiple training programs throughout the year that encompass different department heads. The next training is for ground keepers, which I've enrolled, our building the ground supervisor, as well as recreation department maintenance coordinator here. Any questions regarding the program? It's still up and coming and coming off the ground, so.
Anybody got a question, Brandon?
Thank you.
Okay, the whole case, upstairs, you're going to drop it.
Good evening, everyone. On the last meeting, I gave an overview of opportunity zones, and I have your recommendation that's in there. I'll just read over this a little bit. An opportunity zone is a powerful tool intended to stimulate investment in distressed communities, and that's coming from our US Department of Housing and Urban Development on behalf of our White House Opportunity and Revalization Council. That's a lot to say at one time. Opportunity zones in an economically distressed community where new investments under certain conditions may be eligible for presidential tax treatment. The zones are designed to spur economic development and job creation. Opportunity zones are also given preference, prioritization, increased targeting, as well as, as well as additional support of over one hundred and sixty federal spending programs that the White House Opportunity and Revaluation Council identified. These zones refer to individual census tracts or the collection of census tracts designated as opportunity zones. opportunity funds. Calhoun County can leverage its opportunity zone designation to prosper from investments in the following areas: real estate projects, businesses, schools, community facilities, incubators, equipment, as well as infrastructure improvements. As forementioned, if the Psychiatric Department of Commerce should open another round of grants for the perspectives, then we will apply. During upcoming engagement opportunities with citizens in the target area, we will educate, seek input, and feedback regarding project prospects. As usual, such projects will have to follow along with procedures. However, we're asking your blessing to officially welcome opportunity zone projects, investments to Calhoun County, specifically around workforce housing and infrastructure improvements. As always, we'll update you from time to time if such projects come online. I'm not sure if Mr. Jenkins is here. Yes, he is. Mr. Al Jenkins from the Senator Scott's office has been sharing information and contacts on opportunity zones, and he has made himself available this evening to respond to any of your questions, if you might.
Oh, you didn't tell me all of that.
Okay. He is available as a representative.
He is, he is a gentleman, aren't you? You got all of yours.
I didn't, I didn't need to.
No, no, listen, I'm at your command.
I hope I'm helping you.
Yes.
But if y'all have any questions, we, we're going to start with the workforce housing areas definitely need, as you know, the infrastructure, if we could attract the investment off the infrastructure areas need, as well as these other projects that are listed here and around that. wherever we can. I don't know if you want to add anything?
I would, yeah, I'd like to add that Orangeburg County is doing an excellent job in this area, and I also serve Collington County, Hampton, Allendale, and Bonwell, and out there, they're doing a regional opportunity zone advertisement and promotion. So all of those counties have gotten together, and they've got a contractor that's doing a promotion, writing up a proposal for their opportunity zone that they can offer industry when they come to the area. But you have your sisters across the country that are here, Orangeburg County, they're doing an excellent job. right now, three, but I think last year they announced two in their opportunity zone.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we fully embrace the opportunity zone project that's outlined by Ms. Hawkins, and, and very well represented by Mr. Al Jenkins, and work with Senator Scott's office, and the folks in the federal government, maximize this.
Okay. Any more discussion? All pay the motion aye? All opposed? Okay. Thank you very much. Okay, does anybody have anything on the open? Okay, new business, uh, one that has a formal sufficiency and media application to be RNC, what's going on with that?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We were contacted by the hospital last week about their upcoming efforts to see the sufficiency need to state for an ambulatory surgery center, and apparently, the letters of support play a vital role in this process for the state, and they are asking council if you would authorize the chairman to sign a letter of support for their upcoming sufficiency application.
Okay. Have a motion here. Second?
Second.
Any more discussion? All pay the motion aye? All opposed? Okay. Ordinance twenty twenty dash two, second reading, have a motion to approve. Second? Any more discussion? All pay the motion aye? All opposed? Okay. All right. Ed?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. First, I wanted to let the public know, and firmly counsel, that we are not going to hold that work session on Wednesday, but we still have a little more to do on that, and so we're going to cancel that. Now, we, that, no, we're going to, we still want to do that, and I'll probably talk, make something together before the next meeting, but we're just not quite ready to go on that for the personnel of our office to manually discuss another. So with y'all's blessing, we would like to cancel that and forward it to you. On the two items I have on my list tonight, first, I wanted you to know about a great meeting I had with Jim Johnson from the Small Business Development Center, who was here along with the Tri-County Health Network at a recent meeting, as you recall, regarding the food share program that is happening in, in the three-county area that Tri-County Health Network covers. We recognize that there are some areas that this could benefit greatly, but it was a good meeting. He went and toured our new community kitchen over at the John Ford Community Center, which I appreciated him taking the time to do. And we're going to try to target those efforts to make sure that folks who don't have access to these kind of opportunities get them. And so I just wanted you to know that I had followed up on that, and they made that presentation to council, and we had that meeting, and he actually went to John Ford. I'll be happy to answer any questions y'all have about that.
Anybody got any questions? Okay. loan and issue it under the terms of ordinance number one we're talking about. So it was the very first supplemental series ordinance issued under the new master bond ordinance that you were approved in Idaho. I know that's a lot of information, I can throw that at you at one time. Craig, I did it all off the walls.
Could I ask a question?
Yes, sir.
Does the fact that we're making some of those, and maybe I'm, clear me up if I'm not clear, making some of those junior to the others of what it sounds like we're doing, right?
That's correct.
Does that affect the interest rate on those bonds because they are junior or, I mean, certainly that sounds like it would step up the interest.
So, the interest retention, but given the underlying credit quality of your system and what we look to for purposes of issuing revenue bonds is we look to see what the coverage ratio is for your system. And the way you determine that is you take all the revenues of the system, you back out all the expenses of the system. So it's the cost of chemicals, the cost of first water, the cost of your employees. And so, just roughly speaking, I use some really rough numbers here. If you had a million dollars that you were generating on the water system and you had five hundred thousand dollar corporate expenses, your net revenues for the system are five hundred thousand dollars. Under your bond covenants, you're required to maintain a mandatory minimum bond coverage ratio of one point two times, which means that if you have debt service on your bonds of four hundred thousand dollars and you have net revenues of five hundred thousand dollars, five hundred divided by four hundred is one point two, so you meet that threshold. The way that your revenues work right now is that you are at like three and a half times coverage. So you've got five hundred thousand dollars in revenues but only a hundred and twenty thousand dollars in debt service obligations on your outstanding debt. So you've got more than sufficient coverage. And so the idea of peeling off a senior lien obligation who is going to get paid in front of the new junior lien obligation, while they are receiving a lower tier priority from covered from a, from a security standpoint, the fact that you have so much excess revenue, it literally is being done for more legal with the organization and the restructuring than it is for anything to do with the current.
Does anybody have any questions in the ordinance?
Could you cut that mic, could you make sure that mic? Bring the light.
Do you allow check your mics?
Yeah, check your mics.
Sounds not going through.
So, there, I'm a veteran. I could restart that topic. I think we heard.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
The ordinance, the hearing on ordinance twenty twenty dash one is over. Uh, ordinance twenty twenty dash two, an ordinance providing for the sale of a waterworks system refunding revenue bond to, and be that designated series twenty twenty in a special in the testable amount of not exceeding one million seven hundred fifty thousand dollars of Calhoun County, South Carolina and all amount of related thereof. Does anybody have any questions about that? Counsel, I have, he answered that question, though. Anybody have any questions?
Just to let y'all know, it's about seven hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars savings over a fifteen year period.
That's good.
Okay, all right, the public hearing on ordinance twenty twenty dash two is now over. Okay, we're going to the Calhoun County Council meeting on February twenty fourth. Uh, back home meeting, the ordinance gentleman, you had the indication, please.
Yes, sir. Lordly, President's goodness, we again give you thanks. We just ask that if you will conduct people's business in Calhoun County, give us wisdom, guidance, do those things that are best for their interest and we thank you for your blessings to us in this county of great Christ name. Amen.
Have a motion approved in February tenth meeting.
So.
Second?
Second.
Any more discussion? All taken motion aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. Dave, you got the committee reports?
No.
Uh, see? Uh, Ken?
No.
And, uh, anybody, uh, Dave, you got your phone?
None.
See?
No.
Okay. Okay, I got the written proclamation, proclamation honoring Milton Duffy for services in Calhoun County and the regional medical center. Milton, if you come up. Thank you. Appreciate what you did for us and, uh, going through with it. You know, that work was done by you guys over there. All right.
Yeah, I can read the word.
Uh, Calhoun County proclamation, where as Milton Duffy was appointed in February two thousand four to represent Calhoun County on board of trustees for regional medical center. And where as Mr. Duffy serves on numerous boards convened in his capacity as a trustee until his right to presidency in December twenty nineteen, having been voted RNC trustee of the year twenty nineteen and served as chair of the initial regional health service board in twenty nineteen, as we add during his near sixteen year tenure, the trustee of regional medical center has greatly expanded its services to include the neighbor center, a cancer care level pre-trial center, breast health center, the dialysis access institute center, as well as a joint commission of credits of scope center. And where as Mr. Duffy represents in Calhoun County and a professional and honorable man on the regional medical center board of trustees for more than fifteen years, now therefore be proclaimed this twenty fourth day of February twenty twenty that Calhoun County Council hereby acknowledges and honors Mr. Duffy for his service to Calhoun County and the regional medical center. Thank you very much, Bill.
When you say it's big, Daniel?
It's a two. Counsel, my mother, I appreciate the trust that you placed in me and the confidence that you put in me. You put me on the board fifteen years ago and fifteen years was a long time. When I went on the board, Dennis Britterback was a little boy and he was sitting in the chair, he couldn't see the table, so that's how long I've been on the board. Long enough. Indeed, I thank you for your trust in me and I look forward to Boyd and Kenneth and Cynthia who represent this county well on that board. I know them do a great job. Thank you, Bill, appreciate your work.
Appreciate your service.
Right. You know, because I bet Miss Carrie Kellum would have been proud of me to read that without stuttering.
Indeed, she would.
All right, thank you, Bill. All right, appearances, Jerry Blue?
Yes, sir. I had talked to Mr. Felder and it seemed appropriate about once a quarter for me to just come to council and just give you a quick two minute update on what's going on in the magistrate court system since you all funded and were accountable to the county. So let me just tell you a few changes we've made in the last month. First, I've asked the other two magistrates to undertake a review of all their pending cases over the next ninety days. So by May, I'll be able to come back to you and report on that. There's a lot of old pending cases out there, you know, cases that cow goes on, you know, citizens and litigants lose their, their day in court. Uh, there's one particular court that has cases that some are five, ten years old and maybe it's just a matter of closing them on the computer, maybe it's a matter of doing something to them. Uh, I can tell you, I've gotten administrative order from the Supreme Court of Quan, they've already transferred over forty cases from one magistrate court to my court, because they're cases that are two years old and the lawyers were calling my office just trying to get them scheduled. So I've transferred over forty cases from, from the same report to my court to get disposed. The other thing we've done is, um, it used to be if a citizen came to the St. Matthews magistrate court, because we're the Monday through Friday court, full-time court, and wanted to pay a traffic ticket, they couldn't do it, we were blocked out of the other two courts. So I've made that change in court administration in Quan, and now citizens can come to the St. Matthews court and pay their traffic tickets, particularly when the other two courts are closed. And of course, we'll transfer those problems to the court that belong to the court. So what we're trying to do is just update, get cases current and provide better service to the citizens in our county. The forty cases I mentioned that were over two years old, and some of those cases were represented by lawyers in our community, one involved in business in our community, and so I just saw we need to get those closed and done. The next thing I've done, I've been in contact with Denise Christmas, Judge Lake's accounts, and of course, he was there for thirty years, his accounts are still open and pending, they're not being used, but they haven't been closed out. That is no fault of Denise's, that was passed to former chief magistrate and they're still pending, and I've been here for two years, I don't know why they're still open. So I've gotten an order from court of this case, and those accounts will be closed and reconciled by June thirtieth, end of this fiscal year. And there's not much in them, there's probably a couple hundred dollars that needs to be returned to the county, but they need to be reconciled and closed. Lastly, I've instructed the other two magistrates to submit our budget requests for finance separately, so those will be coming in. And the last thing I want to tell you is Judge Thomas Randolph, who has been our Cameron magistrate for many fine years, will be retiring June thirtieth. Magistrates face mandatory retirement when we hit seventy-two and his birthday is this spring and we have to retire community this year. So, um, we would wish him well, I'm sure we plan to congratulate him and send him off. If you ever see him, he looks like about thirty-nine, that's pretty good. Judge, and I really like working with him. We are in the process, Senator Matthews, the slave delegation, in the process of receiving requests and nominations from folks who want to step into that part-time magistrate role. So that's it, just a quick two minute update. I'll try to do that once a quarter if you have any questions. Glad to respond to it.
Good.
Oh, one last thing too, we are, um, with, with the new establishment environmental control officer who's in charge of litter and other things, I'm sentencing people to community service to pick up trash.
Good.
And those agents to litter, you know, again, sometimes high school students or people who can't pay a fine and, and, um, I'll be darned if I'm going to tell a senior in high school to pay a fine on a speeding ticket when mom and daddy pay it, and that doesn't teach them anything. So those, those folks are getting community service out.
Good.
So much.
I do have, you said that people can now come to St. Matthews to pay a ticket for senior, is it vice versa? Like can, does it do it other way?
They can, but that's not usually how the request works, because we're open Monday through Friday, but, but yes, they could, they could pay, if they were seeing, if anyone wanted to pay it up there, they could pay a St. Matthews ticket up there.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. All right, thank you so much.
Appreciate.
Yes, sir.
Human resource director, Brad, you're awesome.
Good evening. Um, so I think I'd be aware that Administrator Felder is taking the task of rethinking our risk management program back in December, and I'm just here to give a little brief update on that. Today, I've attended several meetings and trainings to include the risk manager conference over the week. Recently, about a week and a half ago, I met with Van Henderson, the risk manager for the Association of Counties, and he's given me great guidance in what we need to do going forward, which I've included for you guys tonight. So just take a moment, look that over when you have a moment. I'm also currently working on developing a training program for department heads in accident investigation, that was an area that we were lacking. I also recorded our bi-monthly department head meetings, relevant information associated with the risk management program. I've visited several departments, which I'll continue to do so that I can address individual needs of those different departments. Uh, the Association of Counties has multiple training programs throughout the year that encompasses different department heads. The next training is for ground keepers, which I've enrolled, are building the ground supervisor as well as recreation and park maintenance coordinator. Any questions regarding this program? It's still up and coming and coming off the ground, so.
Anybody got a question, Brad? Okay, thank you, Brad.
Thank you.
Okay, the whole can be, upstairs, you want to drop it?
Good evening, everyone. On last, uh, meeting, I gave an overview of opportunity zones and I have your recommendation that's in there. I'll just read over this a little bit. Uh, an opportunity zone is a profitable tool intended to stimulate investment in distressed communities, and that's coming from our US Department of Housing and Urban Development on behalf of our White House Opportunity and Revitalization Council. That's a lot to say at one time. Um, opportunity zones in an economically distressed community where new investments under certain conditions may be eligible for presidential tax treatment. The zones are designed for economic development and job creation. Opportunity zones are also given preference, prioritization, increased targeting, as well as, as well as additional support of over one hundred and sixty federal spending programs that the White House Opportunity is out, the Revitalization Council identified. These zones refer to individual census tracts or the collection of census tracts designated as opportunity zones. Opportunity zone investments refers to the private investments made through qualified opportunity funds. Calhoun County can leverage its opportunity zone designation to prosper from investments in the following areas: real estate projects, businesses, schools, community facilities, incubators, equipment, as well as infrastructure improvements. As forementioned, if the Psychiatric Department of Commerce should open another round of grants for the perspectives planning, we will apply. During upcoming engagement opportunities with citizens in the target area, we will educate, seek input and feedback regarding project prospects. As usual, such projects will have to follow on the procedures. However, we're asking your blessing to officially welcome opportunity zone projects, investments to Calhoun County, specifically around workforce housing and infrastructure improvements. As always, we'll update you from time to time as such projects come online. I'm not sure if Mr. Jenkins is here. Yes, he is. Mr. Al Jenkins from Senator Scott's office has been sharing information and contacts going for an opportunity zones, and he has made himself available this evening to respond to any of your questions, officer, if you might.
Or you didn't tell me all of that.
Okay. He is available as a representative of.
He is a, he is a gentleman, right? He's.
I didn't, I didn't mean to.
No, 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 listen, I'm at your command.
I hope that I will help you. But if y'all have any questions, uh, we, we're going to start with the workforce housing, there is definitely a need. Um, as you know, the infrastructure, if we could attract the investment off the infrastructure, there is a need, as well as these other projects that are listed here and around that. And hopefully we can leverage it, we can stack the investment, if we could attract such. Uh, but we would like that your blessing on tonight to, to proceed forward and provide assistance wherever we can. I don't know if you want to add anything?
I would, yeah, I would like to add that Orangeburg County is doing an excellent job in this area, and, uh, and I also serve Collin County, Hampton, Allendale, Bonwell, and out there, they're doing a regional, um, opportunity zone, um, advertisement and promotion. So all of those counties have gotten together and they've got a contractor that's, um, doing a promotion right now, over four of their opportunity zone that they can offer industry when they come to the area. But you have your sisters across the years that hit Orangeburg County, they're doing an excellent job. Those guys are way ahead of, of a lot of other counties and, um, and they're getting clients right now, three, but I think last year they announced two in their opportunity zone.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we fully embrace the opportunity zone project that's outlined by Ms. Hawkins and, and very well represented by Mr. Al Jenkins and work with Senator Scott's office and the folks in the federal government, maximize this.
Any more discussion? All, any more can I?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay.
Thank you.
Good, thank you very much. Okay, does anybody have anything on their own business? Okay, new business, a lot of this, a full certificate and many application for ECRM. What's going on with that?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We were contacted by, um, the hospital, uh, last week about their upcoming efforts to see the specific need to state, uh, for an ambulatory surgery center, um, and apparently the letters of support play a vital role in this process for the state, and they are asking council if you would authorize the chairman to sign a letter of support for their upcoming specific need, application for an ambulatory surgery center.
Okay, have a motion here.
So.
Second?
Second.
Any more discussion? All, any more can I?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. Uh, any other new business, invite everything? All right. Uh, on this, the ordinance is that we just had the public hearing on, we passed second reading on ordinance twenty twenty dash one, uh, have a motion to approve second reading on.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any more discussion? All, any more can I?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. Ordinance twenty twenty dash two, second reading, have a motion to approve.
Second.
Any more discussion? All, any more can I?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. All right, Ted?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. First, I wanted to, uh, let the public know and confirm with council that we are not going to hold that work session on Wednesday, but we still have a little more work to do on that, and so we're going to cancel that. Now, we, that, you know, we're going to, we still want to do that, and I'll probably talk, meet something together before the next meeting, but it's not quite ready to go on that, for the personnel of all this meeting, we're discussing others, so, uh, with y'all's blessing, we would like to, uh, cancel that and come over to do that. Uh, on the two items I have on my list tonight, first, I wanted you to know about a great meeting I had with Jim Johnson from the Small Business Development Center, who was here along with the Tri-County Health Network at a recent meeting, as you recall, regarding the food share program, um, that is happening, uh, in, in the three county area that Tri-County Health Network covers. Um, we, uh, recognize that there are some areas that, uh, this could benefit greatly, but it was a good meeting. He went and toured our, uh, new community catching over at John Ford Community Center, which I appreciated him taking the time to do, um, and we're going to try to target, uh, those efforts to make sure that, um, folks who don't have access to these kind of opportunities, uh, get them. And so, I just wanted you to know that I had followed up on that and they made that presentation to council and we had that meeting, and he actually went to John Ford. And I'll be happy to answer any questions y'all have about that. Anybody got any questions? Okay. And then the second thing, um, is a, a real honor for me, I don't usually do this, but I wanted to, um, take a few minutes if I could to talk to y'all tonight about John Clem. For those of you that don't know, um, John is the, was, was the oldest son of Mr. Jack and Mrs. Susan Clem, who were here tonight, I want to put them on the spot, I think I saw their grandson here too, but, uh, he's run out of the room. But, uh, John, uh, I had the pleasure of going to school with him, uh, he was two classes ahead of me at County Academy, and you may not know this, but John was twenty-six years old when he died, uh, following double lung transplant in nineteen ninety-five. Uh, he had fought a lung disability his entire life, um, but he certainly was a very important part of the community, uh, while he lived, uh, during the short time that he was with us. Uh, he would help friends, family, school, his church, and one thing I can tell you that I can confirm that Mrs. Susan talked to me about, that I know she was right about is that he was way ahead of his time when it came to technology. Uh, he, nobody knew more about computers and anything like that at the time than John did, that he was really great. And he had, he had his ham radio license, which I think is something was impressive at such a young age, and he was a member and officer of the Estill Radio Club. You may not know this about him, that one of his main loves was the game of golf. And, um, even though he wasn't able to personally participate, uh, he spent many hours watching his friends, his father and his brother play the game at the old Calhoun Country Club, which was now the Calhoun Hills Golf Complex. He helped with the clubhouse whenever they needed him to, and, uh, he actually, uh, was instrumental in working with some of his friends that ended up winning a couple of state championships in the eighties. I was fortunate to be on two of those teams, I can tell you I had very little to do with us getting the trophy, so I'm five and eight is included in the list. But John was certainly a champion himself and showed that with the way he was always giving his time and never asking for any credit for it. And I, and I told Mrs. Susan that I'm, I was, I'm a better person because I had the opportunity to be lucky enough to call John a friend. Um, the family has reached out to us, the reason I've said all these things tonight is the family has reached out to the county and they would like to honor John and his life with a memorial bench at the Calhoun Hills Golf Complex. I think specifically, uh, his brother told me that they might want to put him on the number two tee box out there, uh, as a way to honor John's life, and I think that's a wonderful idea. Uh, the old country club at the time was a place that brought John, brought him a lot of joy, and I think that that would be an appropriate tribute, and I'm, I'm honored to ask you tonight to give staff the authority to work with the Clem family, make sure we get that done.
That's, that's a great idea.
Chairman, I'm moved if we authorize the staff to move forward with that.
Have a second?
Second.
Any more discussion? All, any more can I?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. Thanks, Jack, you and Susan, we very appreciate that and, uh, you know, appreciate everything you do.
Gotcha.
Susan, you had locked your keys in the car, ain't you, haven't?
Mrs. Susan, did you hear that?
What did you say?
You had locked your keys in the.
Oh. That's a long story.
Tell, tell John Michael I mentioned him, now even if he wasn't.
I will, and he, he, he saw it way down the list, he said, I don't think I'll still be here.
Oh, yeah.
Well, thank y'all very, very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, uh, I'm going to take a second. Doc, you have anything you need to bring up?
The, yeah, if you don't mind, sir.
No, sir.
Uh. One of the issues that has come up recently in the past couple of years is transportation projects here in Calhoun County. We've recently gone through the long range transportation plan, and I want to let you know that there is a number of very good projects here in Calhoun County. We're going to have our meeting tomorrow, consultant has not finished the draft plan, so we're moving it to Wednesday, the eleventh of March. Once that plan is in place, we're going to go to that next step, which is the technical opposite, uh, the approval plan, uh, for all these different projects. That's when us being called the county with the CTC and trying to get especially the coasts involved and saying, okay, let's see if we can put some of these projects together and make them move a little bit faster. So we want to let you know that, um, the process is moving forward very good, and we've got, like I said, a lot of good projects in there for Calhoun County, and now we've got to work on that next part, which is pulling together some of that financing to make sure that they move a little bit faster and so these projects get done, because I know there's a lot of growth going on, a lot of opportunities in this county, we want to make sure that there was roads are in place for you. And that's all I have.
Good, thank you very much. Anybody got to quit? Okay, thanks very much. Okay, we're going to executive session and discuss economic development matters, project system, personnel matters, the owner and planning, personnel matters, animal control, personnel matters, management, have a motion that we, going to executive, take up these items.
Second?
All, any more can I?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. Uh, you guys with the.